I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu. Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks.
Here.
Mrs. Reese. Mr. Seeler.
Here.
Mr. Simmons. Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to see the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of any public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Also written notice was provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions or videotape related broadcasts, individuals who speak at the Board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. We're going to start off tonight with the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, our boardroom artwork display features the best of the best. On exhibit through September is the District Honors Display. It includes artwork chosen by each of the district's art teachers. The 2019 graduation ceremony was a huge success. Special thanks to Assistant Principal Matt Hattas, who is the lead administrator in the planning and implementation of graduation. Thanks also to Dr. Vanilla, Assistant Principals Christine Shea and Glenn Pazinko, as well as all the staff and board members who participated in graduation. Though the students are vacationing, our teachers and administrators are still hard at work this summer. Over 1,500 registrants will participate in nearly 130 professional development workshops aimed at improving the quality of instruction for students across the district. Our staff will participate in workshops supporting our new learning management system, Teachers College reading and writing curriculum, passion projects, and a variety of other learning opportunities. Another initiative for this summer is something we have spoken a lot about throughout the school year: sustainability and reducing the district's carbon footprint. Each department within the district contributes to this effort. For example, Human Resources, Curriculum, Special Education, Professional Learning, and Finance use electronic platforms for their specific communications, such as employment applications, curriculum documents, lesson plans, field trip applications, individualized education plans, summer staff development catalogs, professional development requests, and employee direct deposit payments. Finance also utilizes check scanning technology to eliminate the need for vehicular travel to an actual banking facility. The district has been planning centralization of printing functions in all locations to promote efficiency and eliminate the waste resulting from the disposition of used printer cartridges. From an infrastructure standpoint, as district facilities are renovated, windows and doors, as well as heating, ventilation, and cooling systems are replaced with more energy-efficient models. As part of our Energy Savings Initiative program, also known as ESIP, district-wide lighting will be replaced with energy-efficient long-life LED lighting. High-efficiency transformers will replace older transformers. And a state-of-the-art building management system will be installed to integrate heating, air conditioning, and lighting systems to provide a centralized automated systems management that will produce energy savings. And tonight's agenda includes the award of a contract for solar panel installation at up to five of our buildings. Our students were glad to see the replacement of styrofoam lunch trays with eco-friendly trays at the end of the school year. I've placed a tray at each of your positions here at the dais. The child nutrition department is also actively working with our food services provider to replace the plastic containers used in lunch service with paper bags and serving bowls. These are just a sampling of the efforts that have and continue to occur in the district. However, you should not see these as new efforts. Rather, the district has a long history of promoting energy savings conservation and has received national recognition and saved millions of dollars over the years. On other notes, tryouts for all fall sports grades nine through 12 will take place at East Brunswick High School beginning in August, including eighth grade football. Please check the website for specific dates and times. All forms for fall sports are due by Friday, July 19. Just a reminder that on July 1, the extended school year program begins, and on July 8, English as a Second Language Summer Academy will begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Now we have a presentation?
Well, actually, the presentation was embedded in my Superintendent's Report.
I was going to say, way to embed.
Efficiency, we wanted to make more efficient use of your time, so.
So again, would you just go back and highlight, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure.
Just the bullet points.
I'll have Ms. Atkins go back to the slides.
This is what the district has started to do, in addition to what they have been doing for years.
Right.
To reduce our carbon footprint and to promote sustainability.
So where we are is, any opportunity we can to encourage staff to use an online presence, a digital presence, instead of using paper, we do that. And so these forums represent an example of that. Even down one of the most recent functions, I know during my tenure here, reimbursement checks for expenses would be mailed to your house. They're now automated. They're direct deposited to people's accounts. There's no more paper that's transacted. So the finance department has really done a great job of reducing carbon footprint by producing paper. Joe Kroschfeld just had a meeting today with printer vendor and about software that would enable us to do more centralized printing and efficiencies we can utilize by utilizing high-capacity, high-efficiency printers rather than the small models that used to exist in classrooms that were more throwaway-type models where the cost of the cartridge far exceeded the cost of replacing the actual printer itself. So we're moving away from that platform, and that's going to be an initiative that we're going to continue on for the next couple of years. So Chu, do you want to... And then...
I can do these if you want.
Okay.
So from what these icons are showing are staff development, professional development, all of our grant requests, EBEF, PTA grants, that's all electronic process now. Field trips, one electronic. Mr. Figaro worked on that with Dr. Bowe this year to get that through. Right, so it's field trips. These two are the encore system that we have in curriculum. This is an example of lesson planning. So from an efficiency standpoint, any of the curricular supervisors could review lesson plans and post the reflections on the lesson plans right here. There's both a document and there's also a list of when supervisors have reviewed lesson plans. And then all of this is our curriculum documents. So each one of these little lines that you see here is a unit in our curriculum. So all of the teachers in the district are able to see that. And then this was what Dr. Valeski referred to as an electronic panel.
So Chu, do you want to go to the next slide, just real quick, please? And so you can see on the right-hand side, the window configuration, those are energy-efficient windows. And is that Irwin?
That is Irwin's.
So those contribute to the efficiency of the heating and cooling systems in the building, obviously. And that is one of the new configurations of boilers. Bernie, you want to talk about that for a second?
Sure. So that was done during our last major HVAC project. That's at Warrens Dorfer School. And, you know, the old type boilers that would normally take up an entire room is no longer the case. We see this type of a unit where it has a very small footprint, probably the size of two cases of paper side by side. And, you know, a couple of these units basically sustain an entire building and provide backup as well.
How do these systems fit into the ESIP plan? So I know there are some HVAC that are in the ESIP plan as well.
We had done, because we were ahead of the game with... Because we regularly look at our systems and have done a lot of replacements over the years, there are no boilers to be replaced under the ESIP plan. So the ESIP plan is taking up other types of improvements.
Mostly lighting, right? LED lighting?
Lighting is a majority of it. The retrofitting of our lighting fixtures to LED. And the... Not the generators, but the...
Solar?
No. The... Oh my goodness, I just had a moment here. But the solar panels are part of the plan. In fact, that's on the agenda tonight, to have that portion done. Energy management systems throughout the district to help us control and regulate air conditioning, heating, lighting, and transformers. That's what I was thinking of. I thought generators, but transformers. We have a lot of old transformers, and they'll be replaced throughout the district as well. So those are just some of the items that are incorporated in the ESIP.
And then Chu, do you want... There we go. And of course, we've talked at board meetings here towards the end of the last school year about removing our styrofoam trays. And we did that toward the end of the school year with these devices that are in front of you. So this, these are more of an element. Joe, do you want to talk about this just for a second? Because this is really your initiative and all your work. I don't want to take credit for your stuff.
If it's a success, I'll take credit. If it doesn't, it's Mike's fault.
All right.
Just kidding.
It's always good to have a backup.
You know, it's a partnership. So the five compartment trays are going to be used mainly at the elementary schools in Hammershold. The flat tray is more Hammershold, Churchill, and the high school. We're going to implement a plan to eliminate the use of trays altogether where we can at the high school in Churchill, where a boat might just be sufficient or a paper plate, depending on what, you know, each student's purchasing. We're going to eliminate plastic cups where applicable or containers and go to, you know, bags. So, you know, it's going to be a process. It's not all going to be at once and transition out. And, you know, we'll see how it works. There is a concern with the trays, making sure that, especially at the elementary levels, they don't collapse, that, you know, the kids can properly handle the food and aren't wasting food by falling on the floor. So it's going to be a fluid situation. And we're going to continue to try to improve what we're using and how we're operating.
Did we, like, test them out at a school to see how the kids doing?
At the end of the school year, we did implement the use of these trays. You know, and overall, it was a positive feedback. But also at the end of the year, the types of meals are a little bit different. You know, it's not, you know, in December, it's usually typical, you know, hot meals all the way, you know, through what the options are for elementary. So, you know, like I said, it's a work in progress, and we're going to see where it takes us.
So do these get recycled, or what happens to them?
We will do our best in district. They will go into the recycling or whatever the applicable tray is. The problem that we have is, once it leaves the district, we are no longer in control of it. And unfortunately, there's not the infrastructure outside of the district to make sure it goes to the right place. So there's a good possibility it's still going to go to the landfill.
So what's the extra cost to go to this district?
Well, we're hoping that the additional costs for the trays are going to be offset by eliminating the use of trays. So we're going to try to gain efficiencies there and offset. There will be, you know, the impact, but not as great as we originally thought. We were looking at $30,000, $35,000 to implement the trays across the whole district. So eliminating where we can, because that's the best process, right? So if we can do a really good job eliminating, maybe we're looking at $15,000 a year. And we're still working through that. And, you know, because it's a balance, right? Child nutrition has to, you know, be self-sufficient. They can't take on a burden that they can't sustain. So the better we can, you know, the better prices we can negotiate with the vendors, the more we can do.
I really want to, you know, Joe, I appreciate all your work. When you came to the district as a finance professional and started taking over child nutrition years later, I think there are things you've learned that you never even knew you would learn. So Joe has been actively working on this project for months and months behind the scenes. And even as we heard community input about why aren't you doing something? We were working on it and reaching out. You reached out to a consortia in New York City, too, right? About, you know, to increase our buying power in a variety of things. And then finally, with the relationship with Aramark, and to give them credit, too, that, you know, this solution was presented. So this is a joint effort by the district and Aramark to provide a more eco-friendly delivery service. And I think it's going to benefit everyone. I think it's going to, I think it's going to be good.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. These are great steps. Dr. Valeski, as you pointed out, we have been pursuing efforts towards sustainability for years. But these other steps that we're taking are the beginning of a new round of sustainability efforts. I think it might be worth it to perhaps put a blurb on the website with maybe some bullet highlights of steps the district is stating to reduce its carbon footprint.
We can put some things on our Facebook site, too, as well.
Yeah, yeah. And it's a great, great start. Thank you. Thank everybody for their efforts.
You're welcome.
For the good of the cause of the public, the Board of Education reduces the... Recognizes the value, reduces... Recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of providing an opportunity to the public to express themselves. To allow for a fair and orderly public comment period, and in accordance with board bylaws, individual comments are limited to five minutes. Members of the public are reminded this is a public televised meeting. Issues should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
Yes, good evening. My name is Dan Swayze. I represent one of the solar companies. My intent is to address the award this evening. So do I do that now, or do I do that later upon introduction?
This is your opportunity for the good of the cause. There's no discussion from the public after this opportunity.
So for the record, I can give my card to who's taking the minutes?
I, yes.
Okay. My name's Dan Swayze. I am the chief operating officer for Onex Renewable Partners. We're one of the submittals, submitters for the solar project. And I'm here tonight, obviously, as a representative of my company, but also as a concerned taxpayer in New Jersey. I live in Morris County, New Jersey, in Randolph. I'm concerned that you may make a decision upon choosing a developer for your solar project based upon flawed and factually incorrect information. Facility agenda item number two, your May 24, 2019 memo recommends awarding the project to ASP Spano instead of Onex, even though the Onex proposal will save you $527,000 more over 15 years, which equates to about $35,000 a year. Even though we have a system that's 12% smaller, we're saving 20% more for the district. So we're slightly confused, obviously, about why we're not being selected. So we were able to download the report, and we had some comments we wanted to make for the board for your consideration. First of all, Honeywell... First of all, back up. I applaud your sustainable efforts. It's great to see, very nice to see, especially when I'm in this business. Also, Honeywell's a great company, and the board should take comfort that they're involved in the ESIP program. However, their conclusions and approach to solar, we believe, is incorrect. One of the comments made in the report presented by Honeywell states that the Onex system appears to be oversized. However, the developer you're awarding the system to has a 2.39 megawatt size system, where ours is 2.14. Ours is smaller. So if their system is too big, then we don't understand how... If our system is too big, we don't understand how theirs is not. So a statement that our design is off because our system is oversized does not make sense. In addition, there's also comments about our design of the system and solar panels. Not to get into too much technical detail, solar in the northeast tends to hold snow if the panels are flat. It's almost like a chalet, ski house. You want a steeper roof so the snow will slide off. There's comments made within the report that say that our system was designed wrong or designed inefficiently because we're not using flatter panels. We're comfortable with our tilt of our panels at 10 degrees as opposed to 5 degrees because it will perform better and the snow will fall off quicker than a flatter system. And even though we are, we have a smaller size, we're still saving roughly half a million dollars more for the district over the life of the system, which is 15 years. In addition, the way the RFP was written, they requested developers to assume a certain loss percentage on their solar panels. So in effect, the RFP discounts the impact from snow and soiling. So it is quite possible that when the system that's constructed that you're about to award performs, it's not going to perform as great as you think because it's not taken into account the flatter panels. A couple more comments on the design. First of all, ASP Spano, they are a good solar company. They are a good team. So I wish not to say anything negative about them, but I do have some concerns about what they're proposing. The solar panels they're proposing are not on what's called the DNV GL list of top-tier solar panels. DNV is a recommended, are the recognized bankable guidance on solar. And the solar panels proposed by the apparent winning bidder are not on that list. In the design, in the summary...
One minute, sir.
Five minutes?
One minute.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, sir. I'm almost done. In the analysis of Onex, we are discounted for technical design, but those designs, those discounts are incorrect, as I just stated. It's also, we're discounted on qualification experience, but no details presented on why. So we're a little concerned, or we request how those numbers were derived. So I'm just hopeful that you pause in your consideration of awarding this tonight. Perhaps you reevaluate the details, take a good, hard look at the proposal, because passing up on that type of money is a big decision to make. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I close the public portion. Moving on to the agenda items. I would like a motion, Board of Education, items one through 10.
I'll move.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks. Second by Mr. Chad. Is there any discussion? You rule.
So at your last step, several minutes was prepared by the January 4, 2018, which was before the meeting was held. So maybe there's a technical error here? Six of these eight minutes with this date on it.
That is an entry date for the agenda system. There's no tech... That's not a technical, technical error. That's when... That is unrelated to any board action.
Okay. But this date is entered even if the meeting was held?
It was decreed... No, sir. That is, that is a date when placeholders are placed on the agenda. It is an internal function. It has nothing to do with any actions that the board is taking.
So I didn't... I'm not satisfied with your explanation. But I respect your explanation, but I don't agree with it.
Within, within our agenda system...
Yes.
We create agenda items. We create them in advance of the actual meeting taking place. So there are placeholders for meeting minutes, for HIV reports, financial reports. So the date you're referring to at the top of that page simply refers to the date that that placeholder was established in an agenda. Many times, placeholders such as those or repeat action items are copied from one meeting to another so they don't have to be re-entered also repetitively from one meeting to another. So that date simply is a date when keystrokes were made to create the item. The meat of the information that you're referring to, on which the board takes action, is in the agenda itself. So that, so that if you look to the, to the right of that page, you see meeting date that gives the, on each of the backup sheets. The meeting date reflects the board meeting date on which that particular item applies.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
I hope that helps.
Yeah, it helps.
You was that... Are you comfortable with the explanation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff.
So the motion was made for consideration for items one through 10. I'd like to see number 10 removed as it's so different from the first nine.
You'd like it separated out?
Separated out, yeah. At this time, just to prove it's the minutes. That's my request. I know the motion's been made.
So you make a motion...
I make a motion to...
To extract item 10.
Extract that and deal with that separately.
Okay. Moved by Jeff, seconded by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to go back to the original, the minutes.
We have this motion on the floor right now.
We have to vote on the motion on the floor.
So before any other discussion, we have a motion on the floor.
Jeff has asked to separate out item number 10. So that the motion I originally made would be for items one through nine.
Okay.
We can go back to anything, but let's... So now...
Any discussion?
We have a motion, discussion, a motion. And second, is there any discussion on the motion to separate out item 10? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post abstain, motion carried. Thank you. So now we go back to items one through nine.
Correct.
Do I need to ask for a new motion?
Nope. We're fine. Now you can continue with the discussion.
So I just, I guess, wanted to make a point of order, just to let the board know. These are minutes from 2018. So generally, the standard procedure is that you abstain if you weren't at a meeting, correct? So I just wanted to let some of the board members know on the dais that may not have been part of these.
Yeah, I talked to Jeff at that time, but thank you.
I didn't know if you knew?
No.
And I know Mark as well.
If one of those people are here, they've become aware of that, and they certainly will do that.
Sorry. Well, I just know for Mark. I didn't know if you'd look at it quickly and say, well, these are meetings. So I just wanted to make sure.
But Laurie actually brings up an excellent point because technically, for instance, I'm going to be abstaining on the minutes from April 26 because I was not at that meeting. So technically, if you weren't at a meeting, you're supposed to abstain on voting for the minutes for that meeting.
I only brought it up because I thought it might be confusing with the new system since the current board member's names are here. I didn't know if they would look quickly and think...
Yeah, it's, so I think we all noticed that the agendas included the sections for your tallies.
Yes.
I assume that was done to promote the efficiency of transcribing the...
Yes, and also the result of a recent workshop that we attended.
Wonderful.
So there were good things that come from those things.
So we can expect to see lots of minutes?
Yes, entirely.
Mr. Winston, welcome to your first set of minutes.
It's...
It's exciting.
It's more than exciting, it's been fulfilling. So thank you. Yeah.
Because there's only five of us here that will, like, Mark was not here. So if five of us here, if any one of us were not at that meeting, you don't have a quorum.
Well, you have a quorum for a meeting tonight. You have eight people. And to prove minutes, you just need a majority of the quorum.
You just need a majority.
Yeah, it's a simple majority of those present. Of those present.
It's not a personnel action, which is...
It's a bit confusing.
And everybody out there is going, what? What are the minutes?
And we need to get the minutes.
Yeah, we'll be fine by next week.
We're committed. We're committed in keeping them up to date.
Most of these people cannot vote on this.
So how about those items one through nine? All those in favor?
Well, you've got called for a roll call, so this is a roll call vote now.
Isn't it...
It was originally...
Wasn't it only a roll call because of item 10?
No.
You can do a voice vote. You can do a voice vote for minutes.
Okay, very good.
All those in favor? You can abstain.
Abstain on individuals.
On individual ones.
Just note which ones.
When I ask for abstaining, we'll do the individual ones. I could have just done them one by one. Okay. Post absences. Mr. Seeler.
Number nine, June 20, 2018.
So noted. Mrs. Chu.
Number two, April 12.
Noted. Just give me the item number, and that'll be fine.
I'm abstaining on item number three? I'm abstaining on Item Number 3. Mr. Sizmar?
I'm abstaining on 1 through 7.
I'm abstaining on all.
1 through 9.
Number 8.
Okay, perfect attendance goes to Laurie. Just saying.
I wasn't here yet.
I know.
That's why I had to abstain.
Just saying. Are we done with Items 1 through 9?
Yep.
I think so.
Thank God. And now, Item Number 10. Can I please have a motion for the shared services agreement between the Township of East Brunswick and the Board of Education?
No move.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks. Just need a second just to talk about it.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Okay, I have a concern with this. This is for the shared services specifically involving the police officers in our town. First concern comes to mind that I've become aware that this shared service agreement is already passed through Town Council and has ultimately been approved on their side for their portion, and there's a hesitancy, from what I'm understanding is hearsay, that they're reluctant to pull that back, to rescind and, and reevaluate. That's not my largest concern. My largest concern is that this agreement, as I've come to understand, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Juliana, that this is a carbon copy basically of, of an agreement that is prior, that, that had existed prior. Now with that in mind, one clause that I think we need to be mindful of is something that we experienced a few weeks back, whereas we did not have the services that we believed as a district and as a board necessary for increased law enforcement in our schools for reasons that became essentially a personal choice amongst the officers who typically would have come to our schools, because apparently a private entity was paying more at that time. So without that clause, I am concerned that we will walk into that fire again should something occur and we'd be in the same place. I, I have a, a problem really doing this without actually seeing the document in the shared service agreement that was ultimately approved by council at this time.
So, I'm sorry, Jeff, you're saying that, that the document here is not what they approved?
What, what I'm saying is the document that is, that is here and signed, yes, by Nanette, it's, it's the same document that had existed prior, but it doesn't include anything where our concerns, our concerns were not considered in drafting this document. And I really think that we, as a board, have a responsibility to the public based on things we've learned over the last 90 days, that we need to have, we need to have a seat at this table specifically involving this, where it might have looked easy before. I think we should, we should really stop and pause, pump the brakes a little bit, and see what we need to be included in this agreement.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to comment? What are the ramifications or downside, if you will, if we pulled this from the agenda and put it on to vote for the next meeting?
We can, there, there is none at this time.
Will it hold anything up for the children?
No, no.
Any, any compromise of safety for the kids or the staff?
No, no. So if you, if it's the board's desire to do that, we would need a motion to table.
I would need a motion to table. Second by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Noted.
I think, Dr. Valeski, you should probably have a conversation.
We will, we'll contact township.
Contact mayor and the township. I can, I can say that in casual conversations with the mayor, he shared his, his, our concerns that we were left in that situation, but I would not hold anybody to a verbal comment made in a, a casual conversation, and I understand why you feel the need to have something more concrete and to make sure that we're always covered, because the safety of the children is what's uppermost in your mind at this moment.
And with that, I think we have an opportunity with the new police chief on staff, who is an East Brunswick resident and graduate from our system. I'm hoping that they're responsibly positive in understanding what our specific needs are.
Okay. So can we assume that you will get back to the board after you address this with the mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the community programs items, can I please have a motion for Items 1 through 4?
No move.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
By Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sizmar.
Just on Number 1, I just wanted to point out, for Aramark, with a 0% increase on the snacks for the community programs, anytime I see a 0% increase coming from companies, I, you know, I want to compliment that, that's all.
Great point.
Thank you.
Great point, Mark. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Moving on to the facility items, can I please have a motion for Items 1 through 6?
I'd like to take a roll call on this, please.
You'd like to take a roll call on this, please?
You do it, you do it probably, you do it 1 through 6.
Yeah, 1 through 6, but on the entire group.
Sure, you want a roll call, you got it. Okay, we still need a, a motion and a second. Moved by Mrs. Lacks, second by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I do have a question on Number 2, the solar panel. Was Honeywell involved in advising on the technical aspect of, of this proposal?
Honeywell did a technical review on behalf of the district, as its consultant in this case. However, the decision regarding the analysis of everything was done by the district's committee, which was comprised of the business administrator, director of financial services, the director of facilities management, and the purchasing manager. And so the committee took into consideration all the proposals and made its recommendation accordingly.
Right, yeah, and I noted in the, in the write-up that, you know, the participants were, as, as you noted, so, so my question was just around, we were able to leverage the technical expertise from Honeywell in, because these are very technical.
And also our architect as well. We had both parties.
The architect's review as well.
Yes.
These are very technical.
Yes, they are, and so we needed their assistance.
Okay. What happens after the end of 15 years?
After the end of 15 years...
What are the options we have?
Right off the top, I have to go back and check on that, I don't recall what the options are after that.
Is that, that was in the RFP, and it would have been standard across all, that would have been standard across all proposals?
Oh, absolutely.
That was a, there were no, there were no variations?
The specifications were, were very detailed in terms of what the requirements were for, for the systems.
And just with having none of this technical expertise, we did hear some ideas tonight, whether they would influence or not the ultimate decision, with some of the things that were heard, I mean, are there any concerns? Was something potentially missed? Is that concerning as a possibility?
I, I'm comfortable with where we ended up. So if you're asking me for my, my own opinion, and I'm speaking also on behalf of the committee, and, and we went through two interviews, by the way, because we specifically had two of the companies come in and interview with us, along with our professionals who participated in that, not to answer questions, but basically to bet the veracity of some of the information that, that was provided during those interviews. So I'm comfortable with where we ended up.
So you're comfortable with the due diligence that was done prior, and, and you feel comfortable in proceeding?
Yes.
Any other discussion from the board? So roll call vote, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Moving on to the financial services items. I wanted to call a motion for Items 1 through 13. Is there any items that anyone would like separated out?
Yes.
I'm sorry, was that a...
That's a yes.
That was a yes?
Well, that's, I, I think you want to abstain on that item, rather than separating the resolution.
But is there any other, is there an item that anyone would like separated out? I just wanted to give Mr. Winston a minute, because...
No, no thanks.
Okay. Can I please have a motion for Items 1 through 13?
No move.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. The, what are they called, flip form riser platforms? What number, Laurie, is it? Is it number 8, a gift from Val Monroe Elementary School PTA? I just wanted to hear, so this is going to be different than the risers used in all the other elementary schools? Or this is, it's saying it's replacing for durability and...
Right, so these particular risers actually are similar to another set that were included in the budget for one of the other schools. They, they actually, they flip, so they have multiple uses in the way they can be configured. They're different, to answer your question, yes, they're different from what we have in some of the other elementary schools, in that they provide some additional flexibility.
So it's, it sounds better, is it something then that hopefully will go to as the need arises, replacing the additional in the other schools?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say we, we assess it and see how it works.
It sounds, it sounds great.
Yeah, anytime we see something new and different that's durable and more, you know, user-friendly and safe for the kids.
No, and I realize this is a gift from the PTA, which is wonderful, what, that we have gifts like this.
Yeah, that, that bears noting, when we see gifts from the PTA on a resolution, it does not begin to describe the amount of work into raising the money, the people who volunteer their times at our schools to make life better, to enrich the educational life of our students by spending their time, and it's an incredible effort. And we, if we don't say it enough, we greatly appreciate what our PTAs do for our district, all our parents, but in this case, the gift from the Val Monroe Elementary School PTA is greatly appreciated.
And I want to thank Trudy Atkins, too, because as a district coordinator with the PTA, she's a vital source for the PTA in, in, you know, funneling their, their ideas, their energy into productive things for the school district, so I appreciate her work with all of the individual PTA presidents and their officers.
In a perfect world, the PTAs wouldn't have to be a fundraising group.
Right.
But it's not a perfect world, and they're great.
They're a great group of people, men and women.
They're great. But also, it's, but in the entire school's community, the staff is always so supportive of what the PTAs do, the building administrators, so it's really a, a true communal effort.
Many staff in the buildings actually join and become PTA members, which I think is wonderful, because they don't need to be, and they actually do it.
Staff also volunteer to be liaisons to the PTAs, so it, it, yeah, it's a great effort by everyone. Is there any other discussion?
Just one question.
Sure, ask, ask as many as you want.
So we approve gifts from the PTA and gifts from, grants from EBF, but individual gifts we do not have to approve?
We approve gift, the board approves gifts, I'm sorry, board approves gifts that are $1,000 or more. According to, that's per board policy.
Okay.
So it's, it's like, we're accepting it as, as district property, basically?
I think we might have looked into that policy.
Under, under $1,000, I accept on the board's behalf, but I have to report to you what those gifts are.
Chad, if that's something that you'd like re-looked, certainly, you could make a, a note the next policy meeting, that perhaps those policies will be brought.
Just to Chad's point, then, if something is $999, do we...
Split hairs?
No, no, no. Do you accept all gifts to the, the school district, or is there any kind of criteria for a type of gift under $1,000 that we would accept?
Obviously, we, we look at each one individually. I can't think of anything that...
That you would turn down?
No.
Okay.
No. So if, if something was absolutely inappropriate, yes, we would not accept it, just to accept the gift. Does that answer your question?
It does, absolutely. If, if the board would like, we could also ask administration to give us all copies of the current policies having to do with gifts to the district, so we could all become, refresh our memory?
It's actually, it's actually on line.
Okay, but, oh, to reduce paper.
Yes.
Good point.
I'm going to get us a rescue puppy for the board meetings. Yes, Mark?
Maybe towards Mr. Seeler's point, maybe we could also look at, we don't want to handcuff the district by, you know, by delaying acceptance, but maybe we could look at delaying implementation of items that are donated, because ultimately, you know, it, it comes back to us when something is, is implemented in the board. You know, accepting and implementing are two, I would think, two different steps. So, I don't know, just for the, the board to consider.
Could I just recommend that we bring the policy up for revision?
Yeah.
And review and revision.
Sounds good.
Right, and I'll ask Dr. Bowley to put it on an agenda for the next policy meeting.
And absolutely, make sure that the members of the policy committee who won't be able to attend that meeting that night, let you know in advance, so that others who might be interested in coming could go to that meeting. Okay. So, any other discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes, with abstention on P 1906545.
Noted. Mr. Seeler?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, with abstention on the bill list payments pending June 28th, on purchase order P 1902752.
Noted.
Thank you. On our human resources agenda, I'd like a motion for Items 1 through 3.
No move.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks, second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mr. Seeler?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. On our information technology item agenda, there's one item, a contract for GovConnection Incorporated, can I please have a motion?
No move.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
By Mr. Seeler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Staff development, again, one item, contract for Music First, can I please have a motion for that?
No move.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Our student services item, can I please have a motion for Items 1 through 5?
No move.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any, is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mr. Seeler?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Again, guys, I apologize for the hearing loss. If you say motion or second and I'm not looking at you, there's a good chance you may want to wave arms or grab my gavel or something. Yes, okay. Transportation services. Can I please have a motion for cooperative transportation agreement with the Mercer County Special Services School District?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Seeler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And now we come to the first report by our new student rep. Welcome, Rachel. It's wonderful to see you. I'm sure you have so much to report to us about because...
Yeah, right? Summer vacation's amazing. Well, we had graduation and that was really successful. I think like everyone was there. 95% of the kids who graduated are going to college, some are even going to serve in the Air Force and the Navy. We had 15 high honors students and we had a lot of families.
One second. Is the blue light on on your?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Should I get closer?
Okay.
Thank you.
We just don't want to miss a word you're saying.
Okay. So we had 15 high honors students and a lot of teachers and families were there to support. And we also had the choir and the band perform to like raise school spirit and show that we're all one together. And summer break just started, so everybody's been going to graduation parties, but we're all trying to stay safe even though we're not in school. We have certain honor societies working right now to plan summer tutoring dates for the end of the summer to help people with their summer assignments. So Mu Alpha Theta, which is the math honor society, and National Honor Society will be tutoring for AP summer assignments mostly. And the school is really excited to implement the one-to-one policy. So the teachers are working on setting up their Canvas sites, which should be benefiting kids a lot next year since we won't be carrying around bags and we won't be using a ton of paper. We'll just have our own devices. And I just want to say personally, I used Canvas for a summer, a summer program last year and it was amazing, so I'm super excited about this. So yeah, that's it.
We have a cheerleader already for him.
I'm impressed he's here in the summer.
So this is the summer for you and other rising seniors of college essays.
Yeah, I started my Common App already and I have like a schedule so that I can finish all 30 of my essays before September.
30 of your essays.
Yeah. Yale has eight supplements. I don't know who they think they are.
Can you strike that from the? So how about those mats? Well, we look forward to the ongoing saga of...
Yeah, I'm really excited. I love this position and I love East Brunswick schools. They've treated me really well and I've just had the best experience here so far. Like, a lot of people were telling me like, oh, high school will be rough, junior year, it's going to kill you, but I enjoyed all of it, so I'm excited to be released on.
We're thrilled to have you.
So did Dr. Vanilla tell you this is a two-year position?
I can come back from college, no problem.
That's what they all say. Then they all leave us. Do you keep in touch with Kirtana?
Um, I haven't really been in touch with her.
If you do, please send her again our regards and best wishes for...
She spoke really highly of all of you.
Well, she better.
As she left the state and went to school.
She did turn me down for being her roommate, though. Thank you so much. I just wanted to piggyback on what Dr. Valeski and Rachel said about graduation. It's an incredible thing to go through every year, to watch those kids walk in, pop in circumstance, just gives me the chills. And then that moment at the end where they all throw their hats in the air, it is a moment of complete and utter joy because the rest of the time they're just sitting there for a few hours with this look of, you know, part complete and utter excitement, part boredom, when will this be over, and part anxiety and terror, realizing it's over and just taking it all in and seeing the support of all the people who come to watch them graduate. It's just, for those of us who have gone through it with our own kids, it's wonderful. For those of you who haven't yet, can't wait to maybe go through it with you.
Me too.
Jeff's going to go through it about eight times.
Eight, well, five of mine and three of everybody else's.
Yeah, okay, okay, so... Yeah. Good stuff. Any committee reports, information items, could you the cause for the board? Lori.
Everyone else is good. All right, so mine's a little bittersweet. But I did actually want to say one thing about graduation. Is it Christine Lee? Was that her name, the speaker?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
President of class.
President of the class, and I think she's going to Harvard.
She is.
She is.
My guess, so I would look at them. Maybe they have better applications.
Streamline, express application.
But that young lady, I just wanted to, everyone is so impressive every year, but for those of you who were at graduation, her speech was so beautiful and her admiration and respect and appreciation for her parents, and she got so choked up at one point that I know myself and probably the entire cur arena cried with her. And I just wanted to mention how hard it is for these kids to get up in front of this entire group and how emotional she was, so. And I do segue into what I have to say because I probably will not be nearly as eloquent as she was. As we're talking about graduation, we all know, many, many, many years ago, I graduated from this high school and my favorite teacher, I had a lot of good ones, my favorite teacher actually passed away 10 days ago. So I was at the wake with ironically, two of my other favorite teachers, my honors English teacher and my favorite humanities teacher, we're actually all there. Dr. Bodden was there, Mrs. Ambrosi was there. It was a beautiful get-together of staff and students, past and present, to honor this man, John Calamano, who is the godfather of our IPEL program. And I know we talked about this back in May when we were able to dedicate the IPEL room. So a couple of days before he died, I got a letter from him and I just wanted, to indulge me, I just wanted to read this letter. Dear members of the East Brunswick Board of Education, words cannot express my profound gratitude for the dedication of the IPEL classroom in my name at East Brunswick High School. My goal for the IPEL classroom was to nurture political awareness and foster civic duty in young minds. My students have achieved beyond my greatest imagining. Some have gone on to be lawyers, others business leaders, while some have made it their mission to become civic leaders. They not only have insightful political ideas, but also strong convictions about how to advance our beloved United States of America. I'm honored that some of my students have gone on to become social studies teachers and tell me that through them, I have even gone on to inspire the newest generation of students, or as an alumni, I refer to them as my grand students. Once again, please know that I will always cherish the IPEL classroom dedication and the alumni reunion on May 4th, 2019. Special appreciation goes to East Brunswick Board of Education Vice President Lori Lacks for facilitating the dedication. The day was filled with laughter and reminiscences about special moments in my career. There were also spot-on impersonations of me in some of my most challenging moments as a teacher. Best of all, it was testimony to the profound effect that my students had on my life and how our lives will always be intertwined. Thank you, John Calamano. The organizers of the event knew that this was coming and that was one of the reasons for the timing of the event, so I am eternally grateful to you, to Bernie, to everyone at the district that helped to facilitate getting that done, getting the plaque, and to Dr. Vanilla for working with the current and the former IPEL students, because it was really neat seeing the kids that are going through it now with their counterparts from 20 and 30 years ago. And many of these people did actually go into teaching and talked about the fact that he had a big role in that. And I know for myself, as the shy kid that, you know, kind of sat in that classroom and learned how to fight because it was you against the world, I appreciated that, so. Just wanted to...
Thank you, Lori. It was beautiful. Anybody else? We do have a need for closed session, so can I please have a motion? The Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting and tends to discuss matters as follows. Those items in tonight's agenda. The length of a closed session is estimated to be 90 minutes, after which a public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Muhooed by Mr. Hong. Second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. We're enclosed. Good night. Thank you.